Welcome to SVARW is hosting a website building class, especially for people running for school board and we're very thankful for Greg Holson for donating his time and we are recording this so you can play it back multiple times. So, and if you have a question, put it in the chat. Okay, and Greg will monitor the chat and answer questions as appropriate. Got it? Good. We're good to go.
Good. Well, fantastic. Thanks for the introduction and if you anybody does, yeah, if anybody has us, I'll try to get to the chats towards the end only so that I can make sure that that I'm keeping moving here to get you guys through this thing. So at least get you through the basics so that I can answer your questions at the end. So this is kind of, let me start here real quick. I'm just going to go right into it and what I'll do is I'll, I'll talk to you as I go through things, but again, keep in mind that this is being recorded as mentioned so that you guys can always go back and look at this and kind of figure out if I talk fast, don't worry about it. You guys can always go back and kind of re-listen to it over and over again and kind of figure it out. I try not to talk so fast so you can't understand what I'm saying. So what we're going to do is we're going to go in real quickly. When you go into Squarespace, you're just going to go Squarespace.com and you're going to get, it's going to ask if you want to get started and you know, you'll probably say, yes, I want to go ahead and and get started and start a new website. In this case, I already have a dashboard or Squarespace. I already create with them, so I'm just going to create off my dashboard, but it's no different than if you guys went in and just said, start a, Squarespace gives you 14 days to create a website without paying for it. So let's say at the end of the 14 days, you, you just aren't, you're not done with it and you're like, I really want to, you know, I don't want to lose it. You're not going to lose it with Squarespace. You're gonna, they're going to give you 14 days to develop and then what they're going to do is they're going to shut off your ability to edit the website any longer until you pay for it. But that doesn't mean it goes away. So I think a lot of people have concerns that if they don't pay for it in 14 days, it's going to, it's going to just disappear from the planet and it's, that's not the case. But you won't be able to do anything. So what we're going to do is we're going to create a, because I'm a Squarespace developer, I'm going to, let me go figure out another template. Is they, they give me weirdly enough, six months to develop it. I don't know why they go from 14 days to six months, but they do. So we're going to go in here real quick about, and they're going to ask you the same thing when you go in. They're going to ask you what your site is about. And in this case is because it kind of makes sense, let's do, let's pick politics. So we're going to go ahead and just quick next and we're going to, you're going to add, tell them what you want to do on it. You're going to tell them that you, you definitely want to publish a blog. You definitely want to do that. You probably want to promote an event or a project because you're probably going to be out maybe speaking or something like that. You definitely want to offer a contact form. And you may or may not want to sell products. Maybe you do, maybe you want to, let's, let's say, let's stay out of that for a moment because that's going to be a whole web store and it's a whole different deal. But if you do want to sell products and you want to check that and it'll, what it'll do is install a website on your, it'll sell a store on your website. We're not going to sell on-demand videos. We are going to build community. We're not going to sell online courses. We are going to collect donations most likely. Not sell service. We're going to showcase, maybe showcase some of our work, maybe. I market myself and we're going to, you know, maybe we'll do some get appointments. Maybe we'll do that. So we're going to go ahead and then go and it's going to say, you know, where are you in the process essentially is, well, I'm just kind of thinking about it a little bit, but you know, I'm going to grow an existing business, formalize an idea or project. So it's just kind of getting a feeling of where you are, where you're at right now. And I would just go ahead and just say, replace my, my site with one from Squarespace. Just because it's, it kind of gives you, it's kind of tells you you're ready to go. And so what it's going to do is it's going to give you an opportunity here. It's kind of figured out what templates make pretty good sense for you as somebody that's going to run in politics maybe. And don't get too worried about these, the picking the wrong one because honestly, for the most part, the, the way Squarespace is built, it's built on, think about building it in bricks. Essentially Squarespace has bricks and what they've done is they've simply reordered the bricks to give you a sort of a pre-built house, if you will. But don't get too worried about that because maybe you get into the middle of it and you're like, I'm not really sure that I want, I want to just add stuff. Essentially all the bricks are there. They're just arranged differently. What, when you're picking one of these, one of these, these formats. What I typically do, because I like a big image at the front of my, you see just some of these things. Maybe you guys want to go really simple. Maybe you just don't want a lot of, a lot of stuff. You just want a little bit about, you've always got to have a picture of yourself because people don't trust you if you don't have a picture. But maybe you just, you know, you want to go pretty, pretty simple. Maybe you just don't feel really comfortable getting a lot of video on right now. Again, I would encourage you to use as much as you can. But if you, if you're not comfortable with that, you do have options here to go, to go look through. I tend to use something like this. So I'm going to, I typically start with something like this one right here. So what you can do is either preview it and it'll show you what it kind of looks like as a, as a website, you know, a kind of a pre-built. But, and then you can go back. So you can actually view a demo site then right up here, right? And what it'll show is now we're into full site and we're into a full demo site where we can actually go in and we can go to services. So it's almost as if we were in the real website. And then when we want to get out of here, we just simply go, just our back button, go back out. And then we're actually going back to, I'm sorry, we're mad here. Awesome. I lost myself. Okay, so we are going to go back to Squarespace here. And we're going to say, start with this design right up here. You'll see the little black box up here. So let's go ahead and get started with this design. It's going to go ahead and set up the, it's, it's grabbing all those bricks I told you about and it's arranging those bricks right now into this, this, this thing. And now what you want to do is when you first come into it, it's going to ask you what you want to call it. And I think I have, I've come up with a kind of a a fake name here. Let me see if I can find where I have created that. Bear with me. I have a lot of, a lot of projects open right now. Okay, so it's Carol Johnson. So let's, so let's go and we're going to call this Carol Johnson for school board is what we're going to just call this and, and we're going to go ahead and finish that. We're going to go through. And it's going to, it's going to tell me a little bit about, it's adding or text pages to it. So, and it's going to actually help you understand a little bit about how to get through and I would watch that as you're the first, it's kind of the first time you're getting into it. But for purposes of what we're doing today, I'm going to just run you into getting, getting started. So I would watch this though. It's, it's, it's worthy of spending a few minutes of it when you first come in. So I'm going to close that up and now I have my, my working website. And what I'm going to do is simply go in here. You see what it's done is it's gone ahead up here and it's picked Carol Johnson for school board. It's already put it in up here. So if I don't have a logo, in this case I have created Carol Johnson a logo. But in this case, you could just simply leave that up there and that's what it's going to go. Interestingly enough, if you search on YouTube, I'm sorry, on Google, and you put in, you know, Carol John, it's going to come up and it's going to actually say, you know, Carol, it'll be Carol Johnson, let's say CarolJohnson.com. And then it'll say, you know, and then after that it'll say Carol Johnson for school board. So Google does a really good job of indexing that name, which is, which is great. So we're going to go in, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to go in and we're going to just simply go to pages. And you, by the way, let me, yeah, let me explain it. So this is your, basically your control board over here. The two things to know over here is that when you make this arrow over here in the upper right-hand corner, let me show you these controls real quick. That makes your, your website, just like you would see it once it's online. So once you're not developing any longer and it's actually online and working, this is exactly the way your website is going to look like in the real world. And that's a really nice feature because old days you used to have to sort of go back and forth between your working website and, and having a an open version of it on another tab and you don't have to do that any longer here. So we're going to push that arrow back down again. And we're going to be back to our web. This is really important right here. You'll see this little mobile preview right next to that. And that mobile preview now gives us a, a working view of what that looks like on a mobile phone. Which is super important because you guys may put in graphics that you feel like are really good. But somehow they're not converting to the mobile phone. And the mobile phone is really important nowadays. You have to, mobile phone access to the internet to most websites is higher than desktop versions, interestingly enough. So you do need to really be thinking about what you're putting into this mobile version. Now Squarespace is building content in those bricks so that it works well in this. However, if you use a really large image across this, it may not translate very well. So what I do when I create images that are really wide that I know won't work very well on the mobile phone, I will put all the important content right in the middle of that image if I need to put anything in that image. So that I know, because what, what the phone version is going to do is take the very, the very, you know, center of that image. So let me show you. I'm going to go back to the, go back up here to the phone. I'm going to press that. And you'll see what happens. What it did is it took that little piece right there in the middle of the image where the guy, let me go back again so you can see it. He has, you'll see it's just taking a little bit of that, that image and it's putting it on the mobile version. And so it's all he's doing is grabbing a that centerpiece, but when you see it as a desktop, you're getting a whole, the whole image. And I think the desktop version is so much, you know, more beautiful for telling your story. But you got to do what you got to do. Now, keep in mind though, this is showing you a mobile version that's assuming that your phone is, is in a vertical position. If you turn your phone in a horizontal position, you will get virtually that same sort of experience that you get on a, on a desktop. Because now the image is going to go wide on your phone and it's going to be very much, it's going to be, look much more like your desktop version. So if you turn your phone to the side, you're going to get that whole image. You're going to get this whole image again on your phone. It may cut off a little bit of it, but you'll get most of that image on your phone. So it sort of depends on how you want to, you want to look at your phone and how you want to, you know, I mean, how you want to digest that content. But what this is saying is, is listen, worst case is somebody that likes to look at their phone vertically, this is what you got is this is the best you're going to get for a vertical phone. This on the, let me explain this real quick. On your phone, you'll notice you're not getting, you're not getting your, your homepage. You're not getting your about page and everything on the top of a, on the top of this. What the phone does is it takes a thing called a hamburger. And the hamburger is this little double line thing. Most people know that that exists now, but not everybody. So if you press the hamburger, what hamburger is going to do now is give you all your, all your navigation for your website. So anytime you add a new page or anything, it'll end up in the, in the hamburger. And then you just simply press the X and now you're back to the website again. So that's how your phone navigates with, and the reason they did it that way is because obviously it would be really hard to go see some of those, some of that navigation at the top if we did it that way. So that's a little bit about your phone. It's a little bit about thinking about how you're going to develop your website for mobile. You actually have some choices in here on occasion about adding things that are different for mobile. So consider that the fact that, you know, mobile does have some options that you don't have. I don't think for what we're trying to do, we're not trying to do brain surgery here. We're just trying to get out a basic website. So I don't think we have to really get overly concerned about what we do for mobile. But what I want to do is show you here again. So we're going to go to pages and pages is going to show me all the active pages you see right now about services, gallery, book consultation. Those are all right here, right now. And they all say demo after and because obviously they don't want you to put your website up with a demo page. So when you see that demo there, what, what it's telling you is, is go ahead and replace that, that page. Once you change it, you know, once you start changing it, that demo goes away. And now it says, okay, that's, that's your content, even though some of that content in that demo site can remain, once you start changing that demo, the demo disappears. So let's say we just change this image on the top of this page. And then we left all those images on the bottom, this other stuff right here. Even though the demo goes away, you know, we want to be cognizant of the fact that sometimes we want to make sure that we take out all the stuff we're not going to use. So what I thought I'd do is, is, is kind of show you a little bit about, I'm just going to use the demo version right now. And by the way, you'll notice that home is down here. Anything above this line right here where it says main navigation, that's what you're going to see on your website right here. What you see under not linked is stuff that's kind of hidden in the background. So let's say you had a job board or something and you don't want it to be in your main navigation. You want it to be something that you're going to link to. All that stuff goes into not linked and how you create a new not linked pages by using a plus sign. And so in this case is, a lot of people do like the, having a homepage. Most people know that if you press on the logo that that is your homepage for websites. But I do, I have about a 50/50, you know, kind of arrangement with clients where I'd say 50% of them still put the word, the homepage still on their homepage. So let's go ahead and do that. I'm just going to simply take this. I'm clicking on homepage. And what I'm going to do is I'm simply going to click, I'm, I'm clicking on, I'm holding it. And I'm simply going to drag it to where I want it. I'm going to drag it up here. And now you'll notice that home has been added to my main navigation. Super, super simple. It may just couldn't get any easier than just clicking on it once, just clicking, holding and dragging. And that makes it super, super simple to, to get this done. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and stick up a, uh, let's, let's change this out real quick here. We don't really need, you know, design for life, beautiful picture, but we're going to go ahead and change that. So what I'm going to do is I'm simply going to go into this little edit box up here. And you guys, hopefully you're all seeing that little edit box. It's kind of up here in the, the left-hand corner. We're going to just press edit. And now we're into the edit mode and you'll start seeing some things on, on your screen. That's kind of giving you an idea of, of what we want to, what we want to do, right? So the first thing is, is editing your, your, your site header. Editing your site header is important. Because what you want to do is determine a lot of things appears to how you people see that. The first thing we might want to add is let's say we want to add a logo. So I'm going to go ahead and add a, a logo to her site and we're going to do, I'm going to upload a file. So I press plus. I'm uploading a file. And what that's going to do is that's going to give me files. I'm going to go to my desktop real quick because I built a little file for somebody on our desktop. Where is it? School board. Okay, so we're going to take the Carol Johnson logo. And I'm going to go ahead and click on that. I'm just going to press open. And now that's going to upload that file for me. I'm just going to wait for a minute or two. So now Carol Johnson's logo up there. Now I can determine how big I want that logo to be. By the way, if you want a clear background, for those that don't know, clear backgrounds are only available in PNGs, not JPGs. So if you're frustrated that your logo goes up there and it has a white background, it's probably because it's a JPG and you need to make it into a PNG. And how you do that is was, it's a couple, a couple of different ways, but if you get, if you get stuck in that, you'll have to just, ideally you'd design it as a PNG. But there are ways you can do it, like bring into PowerPoint or a couple of other, you know, photo applications where you can remove the backgrounds. So there's, so there's that. So what I did is I just made the logo height. If you notice that here, the logo height, I've made it somewhere in the area. It looks like about 238. I think that's pretty good for what we're trying to do for, for Carol here. And then the mobile logo height, I told you, there's a few times that I can make changes for mobile versus desktop. And this would allow me to change that for mobile. So maybe I just make it a little bit bigger for mobile, not much. And then, so I can add a different mobile logo if I want. Let's say that I want my mobile logo to be just a little different. Because I don't want it to take up too much of my screen. I could do that. To be honest with you, I almost never do that. So I wouldn't worry about that too much. Now we're going to go back. We've put our logo in. And we're going to decide site title, we're going to elements is what I can decide now is if I want to add some elements to the top of this. So you're seeing all the home, you're seeing about services, gallery. I'm going to add a button and you'll see that button there pops up there right now. And that's going to be probably, most people are going to either do is use it as their donate button. Or they're going to use that as their contact this button. So I'd always, I'd always start with a bar and you can change that button name right underneath it. It says, get started. Let's go ahead and call it donate. And all I do is simply type in there now and donate. And what I would probably do is, oops. Let me go back to that real quick. I just, by the way, if you click out of anything that you're working on in the box here, it's just going to, the box is going to disappear. So what here is, so obviously I want that button to do something, right? So what I would do is right here, I'm going to press a little captain steering wheel here. And when I press the captain steering wheel, what it's going to do is it's going to give me options here to, to link that to something. So I can link it to a file. Let's say that I want to put that, you know, I want to, I can be a link it to a file. I can actually upload a file. So let's say that that was going to be, let's say you've made that donate button now. That's going to be your, download my, you know, download my, my, what do you call it? Like a, my platform, right? So download my platform. So downloads as a PDF. I could simply upload a PDF file here. And now when I press that button, it would open that PDF file. Or I can put a page somewhere else on my, my thing. What I'm, you know, let's say I have another page. And what I can do is simply find another page and I can link that button now directly to one of my other pages. Or I can put it here to phone. Give us a call right away, you know? So what I can do is, is put a phone number in here. Now, keep in mind that if you don't have a phone app on your computer, that may not be the way to go for you. But what I would do if I was going to use a phone where you want people to connect, remember it'll do it on your mobile phone. So if I have that now, that button now is going to my phone. The minute somebody's on their mobile phone and they press that, that call me now button or whatever, we're going to call that, it will dial my phone number immediately. So that's why you have phone in there, mostly for mobile. So a lot of times if you're going to use this, what I will typically put up here in your box is mobile phone, call my, you know, you know, call via mobile or whatever it is, so that people know that's a mobile thing. Cause most people don't have a, a phone app on their desktop. And then, so then we have, you know, file and then web address. If I decide I want to go, now this is where we might get into, if it was donate, sometimes we can just simply link our donation tool. They'll just give us a URL that now that we're going to press that donate. What's going to happen is the minute you press that donate, your, your donation tool is just going to give you, simply give you a URL. And then what they'll do is that's going to link right into their website. And you can now make that donation on their website versus having to put a widget on your, on your, on your, in your website. And what you want to do is, I like to open that in a different window because I don't want to lose them on my website. I don't want to, I don't want to move them away from my website. I want to simply open up another window. So you just simply press that button and now when they click on that up here, it'll open up another tab. And now you can make that donation in another tab, but your website is still open. That's when you want to use this little button right here. Is when you simply wanted to open up in another window versus leaving your website and going to another website. And now they're no longer, your website's not available. And last thing you can use here is email. Let's say I just want this, say, send me a note. Tell me how I can, tell me how I can make a difference. You know, what, what can I do for you? You know, just give them an email and, and it'll go and it'll send them an email. It'll open up a, an email form on your, on your computer and get you started. So that's kind of what this button is able to do. And then when you pick something, don't forget to save. Because if you don't save, you're going to go all the way back and start it all over again. It's really important to continue to save all the way through your development process with Squarespace. It's pretty easy, but you just got to remember to do that. So we're not going to link that to anything right now, but what we are going to go ahead and do is we're going to go ahead and change this background. So let's say I've changed that. By the way, if, I've already changed that. Let's say I've made those changes. I'm going to go ahead and press save. Now let's say I've made a horrible mistake. I, gosh, I don't know what I'm doing. I don't know how to change it. You know what? It's easier just to dump everything you did and go back and start over again than it is to try to figure it out, get frustrated doing it. So I would just say, you know, discard changes. If you are going to, if you really messed something up and you weren't sure what you were doing, just go ahead and discard change. It'll take you back to the way it was before you started making edits. But let's say I want to keep that now and I want to go ahead and press save. So now what it's going to do is it's going to go out of the edit mode again. And now I want to go back into edit one more time because now I want to do something else. But I want to save that, right? Because if I make a mistake here, let's say, let's say I put the wrong image here and I haven't saved what I just did with that button, then remember if I discard all my changes, it's going to discard everything I did since the last save. So it's really important to save often. So in this case is we're going to edit this section right here. And now I want to do is change this image here and that's a background image. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go in here. You'll notice that when I go into this section, I just simply move my cursor over the section. I'm going to get this little control box. This is with everything. It's just so important. You'll see this with everything on, virtually on Squarespace. This is your little edit bar. It's super simple, super easy to use. We're just going to go ahead and press the, think about the pencil as the working thing of your website. Let me go through these, these, these real quickly though for you. That's edit. This is, let's say, why I love this section so much that I want to duplicate it. That's all this is going to do is to simply make another one of these sections right away. I almost never use that. What this does, move up, move down. Let's say I wanted to move this section below this section right here. So what I'm going to simply do is I'm going to go back here. I'm going to press the down button and you'll notice what it's done is it's gone ahead and flipped that down below my, below that other section. But nah, I didn't really want to do that. So I'm going to go ahead and move it back up again. And that's all it's going to do is it allows you to move those down as you'd like. And you can keep moving it to the bottom just by continuing to press those arrows. This is really important not to make this mistake. But however, you can go back as I showed you and, and correct that. But this is going to delete the whole section. This is not deleting an error you made or anything like that. This actually takes this whole section off of your website. So this block right here, this is a block, you'll see between, how you know it's a block is because it's virtually hasn't added section at the bottom of it. That's telling you that this is a new block. You see those two blue boxes that are right here. That's telling you that's a working block right there. So we're working with this block right here. If I was to press that, that garbage can, this whole block would disappear, but we don't want that to happen. So now we're going to go into edit. And you'll see you have a number of options here. What this, this is again, pretty simple. Once you get to using it. But let's say we want to make this section height small. You'll see it's pretty large right now. And these three buttons allow you a little bit of extra, like for instance, you'll see I can actually make this section larger, even larger than it is. But what they do is they say, well, you're probably not going to need to use that too much. We'll just make it small, medium and large. So let's say we wanted to make it small. You'll see how much smaller this section got now. So that's the section height. That's from the top to the bottom is your section height. I'm going to leave this large because I like large images. And then content width is this section right here where you see designed for life. That's your content section. You see what happens is when I put my cursor over it, it creates a blue bar around that. That's telling me that's my working space right now. And so what I want to do is let's say I want to make that small. You'll see that what ends up happening is now this space has gotten even smaller. It's really more of a look and feel thing for most people. So I typically do it at medium, but a lot of times I'll do it at large too. And then content alignment. What this is, it simply says, I want to put my, I want to put this, watch the design for life. It's going to go to the top of the page now. Or I can put it at the bottom of that section. Why I would do that typically, it's, it might just be a design feature that I kind of like it weighted at the bottom or weighted at the top. But most likely I have an image in there that I don't want the words right over the image. So what I've decided to do is simply put it that way. Now let's say that I don't want those words over those bowls right now. So I'm going to go ahead and push the right, left or middle alignment. And now it's moved it over to the left a little bit. I can move it back to the middle again, or I can move to the right. So that's essentially what these, these buttons do right here is, is allow you to, to manage this content in this space. Background is a little bit more complicated. It's not, it's not tough, but it's just a little more complicated. So let's say that we want to just throw a new image in here. What's kind of nice about Squarespace is all you have to do now is go down and press replay. Oh, by the way, here, let me show you this real quick. You see there's a little, a little white arrow. I didn't realize this when I first started Squarespace. So hopefully I'll save you a little bit of time. What happens when you move this little arrow inside the picture, you'll notice that the picture is now, that's the focal point of the picture, which is really cool actually, because most website development doesn't have that ability. So that's, that's going to be my focal point right there. So keep in mind, let's say I put a face in there and the nose is, you know, let's say the forehead's coming off the top of the page or something. I just want to put that right about the nose height and it's going to go ahead and change that and get that where I want it to be. So that's really important to remember that. And then we're going to go ahead and replace the background. Now I have a choice. I can upload a file. I can select from library. The library is the library I've built. So that means those are assets that I've brought into the website. Pictures, whatever it may be. That's from my library right there. That's not a browse stock images. That's kind of nice. So what I'm going to do is go into browse stock images to show you something real nice. And that is, I'm simply going to go in here and these are free images or premium images. Keep in mind, if you go to premium image, I think you have to sign up for that. I don't think you probably need them. So we're just going to focus on free images. Let's say I want to put in, I'm going to go ahead and just type in teacher here. And I'm just going to press enter. And now it's going to give me a fair amount of these images that I can simply drop in here and use out of Unsplash. Unsplash has really nice images. So you know, you just might want to grab one of these. Oh man, I'm looking for one that I really like and you know, what, what feels right for me right now. So you know, gosh, maybe that's, you know, I like this one. It looks kind of classroom-y. So I'm just going to press on that one. I'm going to press add image. Now it's going to do all the work for me in the background and it's going to import that image. You just bear with me. And then now that image is now located in here. Now, what you probably are going to wonder, what is, what is full bleed versus inset? Full bleed basically means that it goes from the top to the bottom to all the sides and it bleeds off of the page, if you will. Inset now is going to essentially put a frame around it. And you'll notice now that it's essentially framed that image so that, so that you are now getting the whole image instead. I can change the opacity. I'm going to go back and full bleed. I like full bleed personally. But the, uh, over, the overlay capacity, this is kind of important as well. You're going to choose an overlay setting and I'll show you a little bit, how that's handled, but overlay, what that's going to do is whatever your color is in your background, it's going to make that image brighter or darker, depending on what kind of color background you've picked. So in this case, the reason you want to do that is A, maybe you just want to kind of de-emphasize the background. You don't want to really make it too strong. And maybe that's why you're doing it. But most of the reason why is because we'll notice now, you'll see the design for life and the thing, these are really popping off the page because I've made the background darker. So again, if I make it lighter, you see that those fade away just a little. So a-again, if I make it lighter, you see that those fade away just a little bit. So that's really the reason you have the overlay capacity. And then image effect, this is kind of fun. It's, um, again, you have to sort of use it sparingly. But there's tilt and pan and zoom are mostly what I use. But I'll show you a refracted circles just because you'll get the feeling of what's going on. So what that's doing is it's changing the image. And when I run my cursor over it, it's, it's creating sort of an effect over that. Mostly I don't use that because it's a little too wild for me, but what I do use is uh, I'll use a tilt or pan. And as you go down the page, you'll notice that the image actually is changing just very slightly to, to give it a little bit more effect. So you can add those or simply leave it without anything. Um, and so that's, those are your effects on that image. And we're gonna just take it off. Now I want to throw a video on the back, right? So I don't want to use this, this still image. I want to throw a video. Keep in mind that the minute ha, the video has to be a minute maximum. You only have thirty videos you can put on here. I don't think you'll, you'll use all of those, but you only get thirty. So we're gonna go ahead and add a video to that. Uh, I saved a, I think I saved a video. I just gotta go find it. So here we, I threw in a couple of, uh, a couple of videos here. Um, let's go ahead and I think I threw in, let's go ahead and save this one because, so what it's gonna do is it's gonna upload this video into. Now the video that you install in here is a little confusing. This video is basically what it's doing. It has an engine in the, in the website developer. And what it does is it takes your video and it converts it to essentially what they call a motion gif. And so it's stripping out the sound. If you have sound in your video, it's gonna strip it out. So anything you put in in this section under image, video or art, that is gonna be no sound. Uh, there is a place to bring in video with, with sound. And I can show you how to do that in a while, but you'll see what this is. This is really more atmospheric. And so we're gonna bring this in. Gosh, you know, see how, how impactful that is? When you come into the website and you've got this nice, this nice video. It's really important. You pick good quality video. You'll notice this is very slow. Uh, it's not obnoxious. It's not gonna, you know, you come in here and you're scaring your way. It just feels like it's approachable. It makes it kind of interesting. What you can do now with this video, however, is I can change the filter on it. Let's say I do want to change the filter. Let's say I just want to make it, uh, uh, let's say sepia. I want to make, give it an old time feel to it. So what I did is I pressed sepia. Now what I'm gonna do is move this button. And as I move that button, I can make it kind of look old fashioned. Uh, I can bring it in here and kind of give it just kind of an older look. It sort of depends on where you want to go along the way on that. I don't use a lot of filters all the time. The ones I do use oftentimes brightness, contrast or opacity. And so let's say I have a blue background on here and I want to make, give it kind of a blue tint to go with my website. What I'll do is use opacity and what it'll do is whatever the background is, it'll, it'll pull that background through. In this case, it looks like we have a black background. So it's pulling in the black background through the image. And so that's, you may or may not want to use that, but it's something to give you an opportunity. Uh, invert is, makes it weird and you probably don't need to use that. So, but you know, if you're going for a really weird look, then that's, that's a good look for it. So, and then I don't usually use blur very often. It's, it's a nice effect, but you don't really need it. Um, and then background speed. So what this does is whatever your video you brought in here was, it's gonna cut it by half. And the reason it does that is so that it's more approachable. However, let's say that this doesn't feel right to me because it's just too slow. What I can do is press that, press that plus again, and you'll see that it sped up once. I press applies twice and now this, this video is much faster than it was. So that's really your video control right there is how fast you decide to make it. I keep most of my videos between point five and, and one, just so I'm not going too crazy. This is kind of important. If you can do this, what you want to do is you grab that video. Now you have your video. You're gonna open it up somewhere in your video player. You're gonna take a screenshot of it. And you're gonna paste that screenshot somewhere else. You know, and you're gonna, you're gonna add a fallback image. What that is, if you use video fallback images, a still image that, uh, we put in there so that if your mobile phone is in a bad location for getting video, that this page doesn't load up with a white background. It loads up with at least a still image. And what'll happen is behind that still image is as you're getting more data coming into your phone, it'll eventually load the video on top of that image. But that's why we want to do a fallback image and, uh, that would be kind of a more advanced thing that I'd show you guys. If you really want to figure out how to do that, I could run a little, a little thing for you to show you how I do fallback images. But essentially, again, it's just taking it, you press on your computer print screen. You paste it into like PowerPoint. You do your, your cropping in PowerPoint. You right-click on it and save it as an image. And now you just bring that image into this and that'll be your fallback image. It's super simple to do, really. Um, art is, let's say we don't want to, let's, let's go down into another section and do art. So we're gonna keep this right here. So now I've gone ahead and I've added her. And I'm gonna press done. I'm gonna go up to save. And now we have that new image. So let's go down here though. In this section right here, let's say that I really want to, I'm gonna edit this section. And this one, I'm gonna go back to, to the edit section again. This time I'm gonna do background. And I'm going to do, uh, we're gonna do art on this one instead. Art is kind of a little thing they put in here a couple of years ago and, or a year ago, I guess. And it gives you the opportunity to sort of put in some gradient artwork or something like that behind your text. So if I wanted to add a text box up here, right now, this is called a spacer and I'll go through some of these in a minute for you. But when you, a spacer is what comes into every new box you put in. What you want to do is if I wanted to add text, so I go to the plus right here. And it's gonna give me a whole plethora of options to add above that. So I can add all these little different things above that, that box. And what I can, what I'm gonna go ahead and do is add text right here. And the text section right here is gonna go, I actually didn't, didn't grab it. Let me try that again. So I've added text box. Now I'm just gonna say, uh, this is a sample section. Now that I've gotten that, that, that in here, I'm gonna go ahead and simply now use my edit tools up here. My, my, uh, my, um, uh, textual edit tools. I'm gonna decide, I'm gonna go ahead and make that centered it. I'm gonna go ahead and choose my, it has two different settings essentially. It has headings and has paragraphs. A heading is really large. And paragraphs tend to be a little bit smaller. But you get, you can get a small heading, that's a small heading. And you'll notice that the paragraphs are usually a different font. In this case, they're not. We haven't chosen fonts yet. But you can make your heading, let's say it's a really dark font, a really bold font, and we make this a little bit more like a light font. So that's what we can show, we can choose this section, but you'll notice now that the, the text is above the, uh, is above the, the, you know, this artwork going in the background. So uh, it might be a little light. We might want to go back in and we can change the artwork by simply going into uh, background again. We can go choose our artwork one more time. If you can see the black box, it said we've chosen this artwork. We can go into this little control box right here. And we can actually choose our colors. In this case, let's just say, gosh, you know, let's go black. And let's go, uh, it's, that star color will be black and the second one will be this good sort of color or whatever that is. And so now we have that sort of thing. You can also make a lot of changes to how fast that's going and stuff like that. I don't use art a lot, but it's, it's not bad. It gives your site some, some motion. It gives it some life. So you have to sort of decide if that's something that you want to use. I want to kind of go into colors a little bit now and, and colors are, you're gonna create a palette. Let's go in and create a palette real quick and I'll come back and do colors. So let's go ahead and save that. I'm gonna go back to home up here again. I'm gonna go back on home. And I'm gonna go to design. And design is site styles. And I'm gonna go ahead and decide what site styles I want. It's pretty simple for the most part. But you want to do, let's say you want to go fonts. What you can do is pick what they call a font pack. And maybe you really like this, this font pack right here, but you can just press switch right here. And you can choose between serif fonts or mixed fonts or sans serif. Mixed is gonna be like maybe the top one is sans serif and then the bottom is serif. Um, I tend to use all sans serif because that, I just like that look. So let's just go, let's kind of have a, let's kind of pick a fun font just to work with for the moment. Um, it's gonna be probably something I wouldn't use for this site. I'd probably, if I was gonna do something that was kind of professional for what we're doing, I'd probably pick maybe something like an archival block. Let's just use that one for the time being. So what you're seeing is you're seeing the, the top font right now, that big dark one on top. That's gonna be your heading font and the one underneath it, the one that says quick brown fox. That's gonna be your paragraph font. So that's what we're picking right now is that font pack. And I'm gonna go ahead and then go back. And now I've, I've chosen that and you can make some adjustments down here to different things. But let's go back one more time. And now we're gonna go back to site styles again. I'm gonna pick colors. This is the color palette right now of the website. It has this kind of the brown and it's orange, some nice colors. Let's say you, let's say you're a big fan of, so blues, by the way, the blue is the most trusting color. Um, so let's say we're gonna edit the palette. In this case is for Carol, I've gone ahead and I've picked a couple of colors. And what I could do is go see if there's one of these that exists already down here. That's a nice little font pack that I could, I mean, a nice little color pack that I can use right off the top. Uh, I'm not seeing exactly what I want. So I'm gonna go ahead. I mean, I could pick that one. That would be all right. It's a nice, nice color pack. I can also use from image. So what I can do is I can try this. I'm gonna drop an image in here. What I'm gonna do is is go back into my thing. I'm gonna go ahead and pick the Carol Johnson logo. And I'm gonna drop it in here. Now what the, the AI in the system is gonna do is now go through and it's gonna determine what colors I'm using. And what it did is now it went ahead and it, it chose my colors based off of the logo. And so it's now it's picked yellow, blue, black, and it's picked this kind of light color of, so that's what it's picked for my colors for this website. If I wanted to do that, right? So it kind of matches what we're doing with, with, uh, with Carol's kind of thing to kind of create some unification. But I'm not really liking exactly the color that they picked there for the yellow. It seems like it's a little more yellow than the color that I would have picked. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go down, do a little slider here. I'm gonna try to find a color that I can kind of eyeball that that is a little bit closer to what I really like. And maybe it's up here and be a little closer to Carol's, Carol's color here. Let me see if I can get down there a little bit. Um, so anyway, let's just say that's kind of the color there. So I kind of picked that one. Now that's gone ahead. And it's updated that, that color right here. And it's also colored, updated the section to be yellow in the background. So I'm gonna go ahead and back and press that. What I'm gonna do is you'll see right here what it's chosen for this section. So right now I have dark one is what I, I have in this section. You'll notice that all of these have names on them. What this is doing when I'm in this section, when I'm under um, colors is that it's, it's, it's gonna tell me when I'm in this color editing tool, it's gonna tell me what all these sections are so that I know which one I've chosen, if you will. And that's the only place you can find out what color your section is in. So I'm gonna go ahead and press lightest one. Um, and that's gonna go ahead. Let's see, that should save. I'm sorry, you know, let me see if I did that. Have to remember what I did here. Let me see if I'm back here. I want to change that to, so that's, I'm not sure exactly. Let me see here. Why that? Oh, it's because it's still, I mean, it's, let me save that real quick. So I'm gonna save my palette. Have to kind of remember where I am once in a while. Um, so let me save that. And then as soon as that's done. So now when I'm back in this section again, I'm gonna edit this section again. I'm gonna go back in. And I'm gonna see her. So we're gonna go back in here and now I'm gonna pick color. And now I'm gonna go, um, right now it's dark one, but let's say we're gonna do darkest, let's say darkest one now. So if we went back to that edit, that edit screen again with the colors, you'll see that now the section is now saying that it's, uh, darkest one. And how you know what section it is, it's got the little black line around it. So that's kind of what we're, what we got here. We're gonna go ahead and save that. And what's important to know is that you see, when you saw that color in there, it showed text inside of that color and that text is what you're gonna get here. So had I chosen another color, let's say the text was bright yellow in that color. That's what I'm gonna get up here is bright yellow. So it's, it's showing you essentially the background and the color of the text when you choose that color. So that's a little bit about here. Now, let's say I'm into Carol's front page here real quick. And I want to go ahead and I, maybe I don't want that button here. Let's say that I don't, I don't really want to put a button. I like buttons everywhere though, because you want people to take action. But let's say I don't want this button here. I'm simply gonna click on this, on this section right here. Book consultation, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to, I can either edit that. I could go in and say, okay, well, that's just where I wanted to go. I showed you guys that earlier. Where you can put it into a file or whatever. You can go into another page. You can make a phone number, whatever. But I don't want it up here anymore. I'm done with it. I don't, I don't really want this, this and they, they, they put it in there for me, but I don't really need it. So I'm gonna simply go and I'm gonna click on that again, if I can get. And then I'm gonna click on this again. I'm gonna get that, that, and I'm gonna remove the, this block. And so now you see that button is now gone. Again, conversely to that is let's say that I wanted to add a button. I'm simply gonna press that plus again. I'm gonna go in here. And I'm gonna add a button. And now that button is back again. And again, super simple. You don't have to think about it. You now you have your button back again. Let's say I wanted to put in a little, you know, a little uh, scrolling bar, uh, in here. Uh, we're gonna put a scrolling bar in here. And now what I can do is simply up here, you'll see that this is a section right here is a, when you have a little arrow that's telling you to do something else. And what I can put in here now in the text, I can say, you know, vote for me. Um, and then we'll go, you know, we'll just leave that text there and then, uh, I can, I can either duplicate, I can either add something to it. Um, so I can say vote for me, vote for me. And then I can down here, I can, you'll see that they put a squiggle in here. That squiggle is what they call Unicode. So if you want to search, if you want little pictures, um, sometime, sometimes Unicode pictures are available, sometimes they're not. Let's say I wanted to put in a dot there. Unicode does make a dot or TM or something like that. So that's what that is, is Unicode. All you do is go to a Unicode site, you type in Unicode. And then what you do is you press the, uh, the Unicode. You copy it and you put it inside of the, um, inside of this section right here. So let's say we don't want a Unicode though. Let's say we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna change that. We're gonna say vote for me uh, in twenty twenty for twenty twenty-two. Where are we at? Whatever we're in. So and then we're gonna go ahead and press back. And, um, and now we have that, we have that thing. Now we could actually link that. You'll see that there's a link option down here. So I could actually put that through and then you could go and you could say, you know, we could link that maybe to a, uh, a, you know, or, or you could have said like join us for door knocking or something like that. And then you press this and it could be, you know, send me an email if you want to do that. So that's a little bit about what we've added there. So anytime you want to add something here, we're simply using the plus sign. And we're adding whatever that is. And you can just simply go through and find out what these things are that you can, that you can add to that. Sometimes you maybe just want to add a line. You know, so again, that's really simple to do that stuff. I'll just leave all that stuff up there for the time being. So anyway, that's, and then we're gonna save it, right? So we got a bunch of stuff going on there. And we're gonna go ahead and save it. Now, let's say that I actually wanted to add a video in here. How are we doing on time? We're, uh, doing all right, but let me, if I want to add a video in here, let's say, um, I'm gonna go ahead and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna press edit. And I'm gonna add a section. And what the section is gonna be here, I can go down here and choose video. In this case is video means video. It doesn't mean like the background video. It means truly sound based video. So what I'm gonna do is I have a choice here. And this is the way all of these sections are right here, these little things. You're gonna get a choice of different formats. Again, I told you they're bricks, but the bricks are just laid out differently. These all are basically the same content code. They've just laid them out differently. So let's say we want to go ahead and add this video right here. We're gonna take this box right now. We're just gonna simply press on it once. And now it's inserted that box for me. So now we're gonna go ahead and I'm going to, uh, I've already picked a couple of URLs to save you guys time. And what I've done is I'm gonna go ahead and press on that, just press on this image right here. I'm gonna press the box and now you're gonna see that it's gonna ask me for a video URL. The two video you'll see right here, it says right here, supports YouTube and Vimeo. I use Vimeo as much as I can. You have to pay six bucks a month for it. But it doesn't have all the junk at the end of it that YouTube puts at it. In this case is I do have YouTube videos because just obviously for, just because most of you guys will probably end up using YouTube just as a cost savings potentially. And let me go and, and see if I can go pull up my, uh, my video real quick. Hold on one quick second. I'm not sure if I can get to that. Um, let me just shrink that down real quick. Um, so I'm gonna try to go pull in one of these video links right here. And I'm not trying to go back. Let's see here. Okay. So now we're gonna go ahead and I'm gonna put in this video link that I just found. I'm gonna drop it in up here. I'm just gonna copy it, paste it. So now I'm gonna paste it. It's gonna search. It's gonna look and make sure that it has it. If any copyright. It works if you copy. Let me see here. Huh? I don't know why it's not giving me that content. It's weird. Hold on one quick second. My apologies. I don't know. Let me try another one. No, it's not, it's not playing that one. Alright, so now it's found that video. Custom thumbnail is that I can create an image that, um, that I put over this one instead of using the one that YouTube is giving me. So maybe I want to say, I want to put a, it's, it's giving me that as an automatic. So what I want to do is I want to turn that off. I'm gonna use whatever that YouTube is using for that, right? So in this So in this case is. Um, we can put a caption underneath it if I want, I can say, let's say what this guy's name is. Whatever, he's Jason Boxer, so let's say that I simply wanna say um. Underneath this, we're just gonna say, the caption is on. And we're gonna write um, you know, vote Jason. Uh, boxer, right? So we're gonna put that underneath here, you know, today. And so now that's gonna put a caption underneath that and. We're gonna be done with this section, so what ends up happening is. Now I've just gone ahead and saved that, let me go ahead and save that real quick. What you'll notice is. Is that you can't play this video while you're in edit mode. Uh, I can change the background color if I want, let's say we're gonna go ahead and change the background color to, you know. Let's go dark, I like dark colors around my video because it makes the video pop a little bit, that's my personal preference. So I'm gonna go ahead and press save. And now, because now that I've saved. Now I can play that video. And what you can do is just like in a YouTube video, I can start playing this. And I can actually use my YouTube controls here to make it fullscreen, just like you would if you're watching it on, on YouTube, right? So, and then you just press your escape button and you get out of that and now you can, you can watch it. So now you see, we've inserted a video that has sound in it. And um, and that works. You can't really make the video much bigger than it is. On the page itself, they've sort of given, they've sort of limited the size of the box here. But you can see that you can make it bigger by watching it and most people know how to use YouTube controls, so. If they really wanna see it fullscreen, they can do that. And then up here, you'd simply do the same thing, you go back to edit again. And we'd be, we'd be good here, we'd say, you know, vote Jason Boxer. You know, or, or, you know, or. Here's why, you know, here's why Jason. Here's why Jason is your guy. So, you know, and so we just simply do that and now again, we're just gonna go in. We're gonna save that and. Now we have a, a video in here. So you can see. I hope what you're picking up along this, we're going through this, I know we're going through it kind of fast. Is that it's really not complicated to build these sections. It gets a little bit more complicated when you get in, but let's say that we go into this section right here where we have. Uh, let me go back home. And go to pages again. And it doesn't look like I have a contact section, so. Uh, I may want to, so I'm gonna go up here and press the plus. And I, what I wanna do is. So I have to keep moving this zoom bar around. Um, maybe I just wanna add a blank page. And then it'll be um, contact. And once I type that in there, now it's gonna, it's gonna do all the, the population of that page that I need. I'll show you what that means when I say that, though. So under contact, you'll see you've got the spinning wheel again. And let's say that I want to change this name, let's say I don't want it to be contact. I want it to be contact us. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna simply add that to the page title, I'm gonna copy this. Just press Ctrl C. I'm gonna go down to navigation title and I'm gonna just Ctrl C, I mean Ctrl V. I'm gonna go here to the URL slug and just paste it right there behind the slash mark, Ctrl V. And then enable page. I can kill a page, let's say that you guys aren't ready to release a page yet. Let's say that you've developing it, but you know, I don't want it on my website right now. You have two choices on that. You can either disable the page and not make it, it won't, no one will see it. Or you can put it down here behind the not linked and people won't find it unless they have a link to it. So that's kind of, that's a little bit of that as far as knowing where to find, you know, how to. Take those pages out of circulation, so we're gonna go ahead and save that now. Um, and now we should, now we should have a contact us section, but I don't really want contact us here. I really want it at the end of this, so I'm just gonna take it, I'm gonna drag it down. And now it's gonna be at the end of contact us. Now when I go to contact us. You'll see it's an empty page, it's gonna say it's an empty page and. Uh, what I wanna do here is now simply go and uh, edit. And I wanna add a section. And now it's gonna give me other options down here, so see, I have a contact form option right here. So I'm just gonna go press contact and now I have a choice of. Of, you know, let's say you have a, you probably won't have a headquarters, but say you do, you can pick a. A, a contact page that has a map on it or. Maybe a contact page, you know, there's a couple of them here that, I don't know why the contact page or the map isn't coming up, but. Anyway, you can add a contact us page, let's say we're gonna go ahead and add that one here. And so now we instantaneously have a, a contact us page here. And we can go ahead and now type that in and. Put whatever we want in here as far as, how we edit this right now is, so we're gonna go in here and. When you press on the form, you see you'll get the little, the little pencil again. And now you can make changes to the form, you'll see that. Uh, design is, is, you know, where the, where the things are. Storage is where you want the form to go. So you can either send it to your mail chimp, so you can do email blast to people or. You can simply send it to your email if you like. Uh, and then content is. Um, we wanna edit the form field, so let's say I, I want first name, last name, email, but I also wanna add. A phone number, so I'm just gonna simply here, press go over, press add field. And now I'm gonna simply go down here and I'm gonna add phone. And so now I have phone, it's been added, you see over to the, the form. And what happens again is if you navigate away from it, it disappears, so we're gonna go back again. And now we're gonna edit form fields. And now I can actually press, up here is edit, you're probably wondering why I'm, I'm in edit already. If I press edit though, now what it allows me to do is to move these around. So now let's say that I want the phone to be right after my name. So that's the most important thing, if they just give me their first name, last name and their phone, I'm good to go. You can also, now we're gonna be done. And you can choose if you wanna make these mandatory fields or not. You'll see a little asterisk after name, that's telling me that's a, that's a required field. In this case is, we haven't made phone required yet, but you know, we should probably have a way to require it, so. We're gonna go ahead and press required and you'll notice that at that point, the asterisk shows up and it says that we, it's a required field. So that's a little bit about your form field and then um, like I said, weirdly enough, I'm not sure why the map has disappeared off of these, I'm not sure if there was a. An issue, but I, I can find out. What we could do is, let's say that we wanted to add a map. Uh, let's say we go down here. Let's see if they still have a map option here, so we're gonna go ahead and add a, press a plus sign here. And then we're gonna see if they have a map still, yeah, so they have map here. So now it's gonna go ahead and add a Google map into there and now when you press on the, the uh. It's gonna let you put in your address, your business name, you know, or whatever your address, it's gonna put a map here. You guys probably won't use a map, but you know, in case you do, let's say you have a little place you want people to go. To, you have a weekly meeting or something like that and you wanna put it in here. This is a, uh, this is a, a real working map, so once you put in your address. It works just like a Google map does, you can press on that and actually get directions and everything, so that works pretty nicely, so let's go ahead and save that. And I know we're getting close to our time. Uh, I'm not sure how people, what, maybe we can. You know, if you guys wanna do a little, there's this, certainly more to show you, but these are the basics that you. Thinking about what you're gonna do is probably get some content in there. Again, if you wanna add just content, content, let's just say we go to about. If you just wanna add content like textual content, you're just simply gonna do this, again, go back to edit. And you're gonna do your, your textual content right here, you're just gonna either import. If you import, let's say I go into a Word doc. And I import. You'll see this little box right here, this little T-box. That's gonna, that's gonna strip out all the. If you import from Word, you import from the web, you import text from anywhere. Sometimes it adds content to that text that you don't necessarily want dragged in here. So what you do is you clean the text by either pressing, press as plain text. Or you can go right click and paste as plain text. You always wanna paste plain text into your box. If you're pasting, the reason is it just avoids maybe potential problems in the future. And then um, you know, but again, you guys can just start typing in here, you don't have to, you know, you know, this is. You know, this is my new website, just simply type into this box and uh. And you can, you can, you can do all your editing right in here, this is my new website. If I can make a recommendation. Uh, if you don't have. Uh, what's the name, Grammarly on your computer, it's this little blue, this little box is right here. Grammarly is free, you can get a, you can get an advanced version if you don't have it. But add Grammarly to your computer because Grammarly, you'll see what it did. Is it's gonna flag anytime I make a mistake. On uh, on anywhere on my, virtually anything I open up on my computer. Grammarly goes into and, and goes in and tells me when I've made a, a spelling error, so. I could simply go in there, Grammarly is my best friend for writing content. So if I can make that recommendation again, it's called Grammarly and I don't think it's a, if you haven't written that down. So let's go through some of the questions real quick and then I'll try to get you guys out, and if you guys wanna do a second session or something, maybe we can do that. There's probably a few more things to know, so let me pop through here real quick. Um, and see what you guys have said. Uh, yeah, so the video is gonna be available, I think, you guys, I don't know where you guys are gonna make that available, if you would let us know. Where that's gonna be, then uh, I, I assume you'll send out a link to everybody that's. On this, this call today, is that correct?
Yes, definitely.
And then uh, doing our new school board that we are running for, that's a good question. Anybody have a good answer for that, like Jan, do you have a, an answer for that?
No, I, I, I think on their website, they would put the school district that they're running for, definitely.
Okay. And then uh, thank you uh, for the, and then uh. Oh, QR codes. So interesting enough, I love this thing called, you're asking me about how to create, I love QR codes, by the way. I, I wish more people would understand that, the high value of QR codes, because I have it on my, my uh. My card, I have it everywhere. The reason is you always wanna drag people back to your video. Video is the way people are watching, people, this is the way people are. Are communicating nowadays. What you may not know is, I don't know if you're seeing my Google bar up on top here. Um, but you can actually go into a, once you're on a, in a website. You can actually press this little share page button right up here. Um, there's eyeball and then there's the share page, and when you go to share page, you can actually make a QR code. Off of any URL that you're currently on, which is kind of cool. It's kind of a, it's a, a little bit janky of a QR code. It's just basic, it's a very basic, it's absolutely functional, though. Um, but I use a uh, I use a, let me bear with me, I can't remember, I'm just losing the name right off the top of my head, it's QR code monkey. Is what I like, 'cause you can actually put your logo in the middle of it, you can change the colors, you can change the shape of it. It, it's really kind of a cool little tool and it's free, so why not, you know, so that's how I make my. And then um, can you ever donate link, yeah, so donate, this thing has a donate ability, so here's what, let me go through that real quickly in a minute. I can use iPad to use this site. Uh, I don't know if you can develop on an iPad, be honest with you, I just don't know, 'cause I've never tried it. Uh, is overlay capacity the same thing as screen, is screen back? Uh, I don't know, but it's, it's essentially changing the uh. There's a lot of ways to change that image and how you see it. You can actually even edit, there's even a photo editor in there. That will show you how, even you can actually edit your still photos. Keep in mind that if you drag in a GIF, you can't edit a GIF inside of here and you can't edit video inside of. This website, but you can edit an image. I would call the image editor rudimentary though. However, so I wouldn't get too crazy, I try to get as much video editing as you can done off of the uh, off the website. So that answers most of those questions, but I did, you did ask about, let me show you real quickly um, on uh, link sharing though, and then we can.
He didn't really answer my question about the screen back, that's really important to know.
What do you mean, when you say screen back, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Oh, well, um, screen back is like making the image really, really light. So that I can add. Yeah, the, it's make it very, very light, so it just kind of blends into the background, but it does not take over the.
Yeah, let me show you how we do that, so let's take this image real quick here, let me go ahead and save whatever we have. So let's take this image here real quick. First of all, I wanna pick, if you want this image to be light. You have to pick, uh, we're gonna go ahead and edit. And we're gonna pick this image right here. If I want this image to be very light. I have to pick a background color that's very light. So I'm gonna go ahead and pick colors again and I'm gonna go down here to lightest one. And the lightest one, by the way, you can change, you can make lightest one with black, you can make lightest one with. White letters, it's up to you, you can edit these yourself, but we're gonna go ahead and pick lightest one. Now you notice right away the background went a little lighter. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna go back over to background. And I'm gonna go over here to overlay capac- opacity. And because it's white now, as I move that up, you'll notice that background is gonna fade out quite a bit. Because what it's letting the white, it's letting the white bleed through is what it's doing. Had I chosen black. Let's say I chose darkest black, you'll see now that when I use that same tool. That it's made the background black now because it's letting the black bleed through, if that makes sense.